Good evening, everyone. Today is December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six oh two P. M. We are at one hundred Polk Avenue in the City Council Chambers for our Cape Canaveral City Council Regular Meeting. I call this meeting to order. And with that, Councilmember Davis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Wonderful, and thank you all. A nice turnout tonight for being here. We appreciate your time. We've got a big agenda tonight, and this time is a, if there's anything that we want to adjust or move around on the agenda, amend the order of, or make any comments, now is the time. Counsel, would anyone like to make any amendments to the agenda or approve it as written?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis, to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Or.
Councilmember Jackson?
Or.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Or.
Councilmember Willis?
Or.
The agenda will remain as approved as, or approved as written. At this point, we're going to the Presentations and Interviews portion of the meeting. The first presentation is a proclamation and declaring January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as one hundred fourteenth day in the city of Cape Canaveral, recognizing the service of the one hundred fourteenth Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron and the community stewardship of its members to Cape Canaveral. I believe we have someone here to receive this. I'll go ahead and come down there and grab that and meet you at the podium and read the proclamation. Official proclamation of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, whereas the National, whereas the Air National Guard founded on September eighteenth, nineteen forty-seven, and was established as a reserve component of the United States Air Force and provides almost half of the Air Force Tactical Airlift Support Combat Communication Functions, Aero Medical Evacuations, and Aerial Fueling. And whereas the United States Air Force One Hundred Fourteenth Space Control Squadron, a geographically separated unit of the Florida Air National Guard, One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Fighter Wing, located at Cape Canaveral Space Force Station, Florida, was re-designated as the One Hundred Fourteenth Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the One Hundred Fourteenth Unit has received many recommendations during times of both war and peace and has been recognized as providing a necessary and reliable service to the United States of America and the state of Florida. And whereas the One Hundred Fourteenth Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron personnel have made their homes in our city and surrounding area and participate in many of our city-sponsored events and activities such as Friday Fest. Whereas the One Hundred Fourteenth Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron hosted the city of Cape Canaveral mayor, seated members of city council, several city employees, as well as representatives of the local veterans groups, veterans of foreign wars, and the American Legion to their base of operation. During the visit, the unit provided an overview of their work and how it relates to the safety and well-being of all Americans, as well as the residents of our city, county, and state. Now, therefore, I, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, hereby do proclaim January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron One Hundred Fourteenth Day, sign and seal this nineteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll quickly just say a couple of words. I just want to say thank you on the behalf of the One Hundred Fourteenth Electromagnetic Warfare Squadron. We make our homes here. We live and work in the community. And one of the big powers of your Guardsmen is that they're, they offer enduring continuity and support to the members of the state in times of disaster relief. I say that and also offer that we owe an obligation to, and a deliberate reminder on one fourteenth that to serve as a call to action to us to get out into the community and to support our members. And also, thank you for your support to us.
Thank you all, and thank you for the opportunity you gave the council and the city to be a part of that and to learn more about what's happening there. One of the coolest experiences of my time here, and I know that the other council members enjoyed it as well, and city staff. So thank you, counsel. If there's any words I'd like to say. I appreciate all of you taking the time to be here, and as I understand, some of you have driven a ways to be here. Thank you. Yes. Have a good night. God bless. Okay, the next presentation to the finance, is to the Financial Services Department of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Fiscal Year Ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. John, would you be receiving this today? Okay, so that, City Manager, is that something that?
Please proceed with the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. So for those of you who are kind of understanding here what's happening, this is something that I believe our city, every year that I've been on, has been, received this certificate for achievement and very proud of our city staff to do this. And I'll just read the summary, which I think sums it up perfectly. The Government Finance Officers Association has recognized the Financial Services Department for excellence in financial reporting by awarding their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The city, ACFR, is a complete set of financial statements issued by the government entity in accordance with the requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This report is comprised of the introductory, financial, and statistical sections. The ACFR describes what has, what was spent by the reporting entity during the past year, as well as the ending state of its assets and liabilities. The report is a summarization of all the annual reports of the entity's agencies. The report is issued by state, municipal, and government entities. The ACFR was judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive, quote, "spirit of full disclosure" to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the ACFR. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately seventeen thousand five hundred government finance professionals. And this is the twenty-eighth consecutive year that the city of Cape Canaveral Financial Services Department has received this prestigious award for excellence in financial reporting. The award exemplifies the dedication, knowledge, and professionalism of the Financial Services Department and staff. So, John, if you'd like to join me, I have the certificate here out front, and congratulations, and thank you for all you do.
I just want to recognize my outstanding finance staff. The city has a tremendous finance staff. Jenny, Cheryl, Donna, and Kelly. And the support we get from the entire staff of the city, all the workers, the city manager, is just, is amazing. It makes everything possible. But the city is in good hands because it's got a tremendous finance team and a tremendous staff. So I'm proud of every one of them, and it's just a pleasure to come to work every day in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you again. So for those of you who filled out a public comment card, I have two up here. If you'd like to speak, we ask that you please fill one out. We, at the public participation portion of the meeting, any member may speak for three minutes. The way it works is that the light goes green. When it goes yellow, you got about thirty seconds left, then we ask it, when it goes red, you, you please try to finish. The two card, the first one I have is Joanne Marshall. Joanne, are you here today? Please, if you'd like to speak, please come forward and thank you. If you don't mind, state your name and address.
My name is Joanne Marshall, and I live at one fifty-one Portside, at Portside Villas condos. And I've lived there for about two years now. And there's a, there's, to the west of us, there's a raw material business that, when I first moved there, well, about a year ago, they started getting their piles higher and higher and higher. And I had heard that they were, that they were fined for this, but they just keep doing it. And then I also heard that they bought the land to the north of Portside, which is a real big problem, which means they're going to start spreading around us. You know, I'm concerned about health, the health of myself. You know, within the past six months, I've had, I don't even, I don't smoke, I never have smoked, but I've had some wheezing. And I'm wondering if it's due to that dust. I can wash my car, and the next day I go out, and there's just a layer of dust all over my car. And there's just a layer of dust on everything, and it's really, I know it's really hard for the HOA people to keep it clean because of that. Also, the noise. The noise level is, you know, all the back, the beep 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 backing up of the trucks and the moving of the raw material. And, you know, when I, when I bought there, I didn't see this raw material. I mean, I knew it was back there, but that, it was below the fence line. And there wasn't very much of it at all, because what my husband and I walked the fences to see what was around us. And, but it's there now. And it's close to a lot of, you know, a lot of families live there. And it's close to us, and, and I'm very, very, I'm sure there's other people other than myself that are concerned about the health and the dust and the noise. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
We appreciate it. And I believe the next one, Jean? I think it looks like from the same area.
Hello, my name is Jean Durba. I'm a snowbird. But anyway, we were actually thinking about staying here because I've been here five years now. We love it. And so we, I'm from Boston area, so.
Ms. Jean, Ms. Jean, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is, is your name Jean Dep?
Durba, D-E-R-B-A.
One more time, please. I'm sorry.
D-E-R-B-A.
D-E-R-B-A. Thank you, Ms. Durba.
So we love it there. However, there's been a problem. I'm concerned about our health. I'm concerned about our real estate value, because if I had to drive there now and see what I, see what you can see, I would not move there. I wouldn't know. Buy my house? I wouldn't, I mean, so the value that we're paying, and I'm loving the fact that the real estate keeps going up, that means we're paying more taxes, and I don't think I could sell my house for, for what we could get last year. That's one, that's another reason. And there's also an eagle that lives in one of the trees right where they're doing all this. That's another reason. You know, it's just that if we, if you have to live there to see what's going on. But, I mean, we were ingesting this mess. You know the wind we've had this last week? Well, it's all over our cars, and we're breathing it. You know, and we're all, most of us are senior citizens. I don't, we don't need this. I'm trying to, we're here to make ourselves healthier. So, I mean, I don't much have, really not a lot to say, except that someone has to be concerned besides us. And so I'm hoping that people will understand, we, I mean, we're not complainers. We love it here. We want to continue. I like the way we can walk, we can do things. We're not in the snow. There's so many advantages here, but we don't want, we're really concerned what we're breathing in. And besides, that's the most important thing, really, but also the real estate value and the fact that, you know, but like, I mean, it's embarrassing, to tell you the truth, to have some of my relatives come and see it. You know, they thought I was living in a nice place, and you see that, and you'd say, oh, you're trying to, you're trying to avoid the area. I can't avoid the area because our window looks right at it from the bedrooms and things, so they, they see it. We loved the view before. We saw the ship. It was, it would lit, it'd be lit up at night, and it was, and it was essentially an asset to have the value of our homes. Now it's not. I thank you, everyone, for listening.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Durba. I know that the last meeting, and you had brought this up as well, Joanne, a gentleman had spoke the public comment portion of the meeting, and I think the council all heard and is interested in figuring something out. Were, are we trying to get this on a future agenda item, if you don't mind, or City Manager might be able to update?
Sure. I'd actually like to turn over to Dave because he can talk about the current status of code enforcement and what the company is wanting to do about their expansion plans.
Let me check one thing, Dave, before you go there. I did just get a third card. I believe Ms. Sharon Letterer, was that related to this issue by chance? If you would actually like to let you go ahead and speak, and then Dave will have the opportunity to hear you as well. I, so come on up. And yes, I have Sharon Letterer, and I assume you live in the same area?
I do.
Thank you.
Everybody's talking about them expanding. That's fine. We want them. We love the port to make money, people to make money. They can expand all they want. All they have to do is put up a wall like they did on the other side, and that would stop all the crap hoops, because then we wouldn't get the dust. We wouldn't get the view of mountains, of dirt and sand. It's just not right. It really isn't. They work all hours of the night. They don't abide by any rules. I went back there, I talked to the guy. I said, "You can't do that." He goes, "I can." I said, "No, there's rules, regulations, and city codes." He said, "No." He said, "I can do it." I said, "But we'll see." So if it's, if it is a city code where they do not, we don't have to look at a dump, because that's what it is. There's trucks there with their hoods up. It's a mess. It really is. And it's, and it is affecting us. Health-wise, if we want to sell, our property is going down while they're making tons of money. They can't put up a wall. It's, it's not right. So I hope that you guys can do something, because it's been about two years now looking at, little less, that we've been looking at this and complaining about it. The piles of sand are higher than the buildings. That's pretty bad.
What's the latest, if you don't mind me asking? If you recall, the latest you remember them working there, is it past sundown?
Yes, sundown, early in the morning.
So, so around the clock, there's, there's?
This morning, I got up and I went outside to see what kind of day it was. I think it was like quarter after six. I don't know what time they started, but a quarter after six, soon as I opened that door, I heard the bam of the truck and beep beep. Aren't they supposed to start at seven?
I'd like to hear from our city staff, and I know that they're looking into it, but.
I mean, I, I've tried recording them. I got all kinds of pictures on my phone of the, I'm calling it a dump. Because when I talked to city council, they said that they are storing stuff for the port. And I said, "What are they, what?" He goes, "Junk." So are they getting paid to do that? They're getting paid to do that, and we got to look at that? They have the money to put a wall up. Everything will be resolved. But until then, you're going to be getting a lot of phone calls and a lot of complaints because it's not right. Our community was a beautiful community. And now, like she said, it's an embarrassment.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to share this and coming with a proposed solution as well. There's two other cards. Is this relate, it looks like it's related to the same topic that just came in as well? If, Sharon, I think you had finished, right? I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Le- Leanne Cox? Hi, Ms. Cox. How are you doing? Take your time. I know that. I'll let you know.
My name is Leanne Cox. I live at One Bed, Portside Villas. And I am, I'm just here, I agree with everything that they said, so I'm not going to take your time, you know, because I bidow to what the people in front of me said, but I have a question. Because I know that Ambassador Services gets penalized because they're breaking code or whatever it is, and they get penalized and they pay it. And then they continue because nobody comes out, and there's no checks and balances on it. And I'm just wondering, does that money go into the budget and help to beautify our, you know, Cape Canaveral, the city, which is lovely? But it's really on the backs, if that happens, on the residents at Portside. And like she, they said, it's just, it's our health. It's just not a beautiful community like it was. So I know it's being voted on in January at the agenda. Is that correct? So just please hear our voices and think about us and consider us. And make sure that Ambassador Services are responsible and follow the code of law and don't just pay the fine and then, you know, ignore everything else. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last card I have here is Mitch Gets Box. Is that the last name, Mr. Box? Oh, come on forward whenever you're ready. Thank you. And I assume you're from the same, and live in the same area?
I just wanted to add a few things because I've been there for five years, going in six. And at, at first, they were farther down with all the rock. And they had conveyor belt with water squirting on it that to keep the dust down, because there were so many complaints in the past. Now then, they moved up and there's no water flowing to keep that dusting. I actually had, we had two eagles that lived it on that property. And since they have done all this, those two eagles have left. I ain't kidding you. They were back for maybe ten days, and I think they overlooked this thing. And I thought there was a restriction, three hundred yards or something like that, from Eagle's Nest or something like that, the United States Building thing, because that really upset me, more to the fact that I was there and watched it, and these eagles are gone, you know? And, and then, you know, it was always nice to get up in the morning, walk out, because I'm right next to it. I walk out and you'd see the cruise ship out there at night, you know, lit up and stuff, but that really upset me, because year after year, we've had eagles there. This year, they left. And they had eaglets, you know, they had little babies last year. We got to watch them fly off. And, you know, I love animals, and that really bothered me. So I just want to let you guys know that part. I call the conservation, not that it did any good. I didn't get no reply, but I called the conservation and told them about it. Because I think there is some kind of law governing how far they can do that kind of stuff. But, you know, that, that rock is almost as high as their nest. If you come out there behind subway, you could see the nests, the subway there. You can go there, and you can look at the eagles nest. And that just really bothered. But thank you. I just wanted to add that part. And I just would love to see, I would love to see it all gone, but I know that it ain't gonna happen because it's all about this, you know? But thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. And again, thank all of you. I know that we appreciate being involved in the city, but you probably have other things you'd rather be doing on your, your evening here, so your voice is heard. I know this council is going to do what we can and really follow city staff's recommendation here. So David, thank you. I know I asked for the pause button. That's all the cards I have on that.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and I certainly hear what you're having to say. I'm, staff is very aware of the situation. We are, the ball is rolling, I guess is the best way to describe it, on addressing this issue. I've been in contact with the Ambassador Services folks. There's, there's several different owners and different iterations of owners up in that area, but they're, they're all part of the operation of the aggregate project. Yes, our code enforcement folks have identified a number of violations to the aggregate operation, primarily the expansion of the aggregate storage, as well as some violations to some of the operational standards as far as hours, noise, noise and dust, addressing those two items. And so for purposes of helping the audience understand everything, the, the city has entered into what's called a Binding Development Agreement, or BDA for short. I think the original one was in two thousand and six. And there's been two amendments to that due to changing circumstances. I think the last one was approximately five or six years ago. They are, the, the operation is outside of the parameters of the BDA, so they are in violation of that. Our code enforcement folks have talked to them. They, they. Um, they, they, Ambassador Services would have proposed a third amendment to the BDA. To recognize the operation as it stands today, uh, to include the expansion of, of the, of the operation. Um, and some, um, purchase, some purchases of some properties that they've done subsequent to the last amendment. They have a draft amendment. Uh, as a matter of fact, I received it in the last few days. Um, we had originally asked Ambassador to come to the council this evening. I shouldn't say we had asked them. We had had some discussions with them. And that was their, our initial impression was that they wanted to have a conversation with the council. About the parameters of the, uh, third amendment to get an initial reading from the council. They decided they would rather go ahead and negotiate a development agreement and pres- uh, the, the third amendment. And present it to the council. Obviously that wasn't going to be ready for tonight. So tonight's issue is going to be just a discussion item. So, um, we are, we are just in receipt of the proposed draft from them. I distributed to a number of folks on the last day or two. Um, we're going to be discussing that with them and bringing to the council maybe as early as January, maybe, maybe February. We'll see. Um, but, uh, that's, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to go too deep into, into that yet. But I, I think that the, the message I want to send to the group here this evening is. We do understand the issues. We do understand the violations. Um, they, Ambassador has proposed a, in their mind, a solution to those violations and issues. Um, obviously at the end of the day, it'll be the council's decision on whether you approve a third amendment to the BDA to address their concerns and what they're asking for. Um, so that'll be a subsequent, subsequent discussion, um, um, from this evening. Um, but, um, I, 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 I've been up there several times and I, I know what's going on up there and it's, it's just, it's not right. And, uh, sh- and I, I don't want to presuppose what the council's going to do at the third amendment can, when you consider that. Um, you know, you can either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down, but if, if it is a thumbs down, we're going to. Move very quickly, um, on the code enforcement situation. And, uh, bring them to the special magistrate if needed. Uh, we, obviously code enforcement, we're always looking for voluntary compliance. Oftentimes we don't get that and at, at that point, well, we have to take it to the special magistrate. So it could ultimately end up with the special magistrate to levy fines, daily fines on this property owner. Um, regarding the eagle, I, I do have some background with eagles, um. Enforcing eagle regulations and yes, there are. There are eagle regulations about what can and can't be done within concentric circles of a nest. Really, okay, it really just depends on when the eagle nest was established versus the use out there. So it's kind of a timing issue. I just don't know those details. I wasn't aware of that. So. We'll, we'll look into that as well.
Dave, is it fair to say that code enforcement is, um, doing their, their due diligence and acting properly to correct the violations? At the same time, the company is wanting to ask the council to approve an amendment to the BDA. And that decision lies fully with council?
Yes.
Thank you.
You don't, uh, yes, we have one more public comment card and I'm going to go back out to the public. Uh, or online to make sure there's anyone. Um, let me just recap something here. This is the public comment portion of the meeting and, and I do appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much, Dave. Sounds like, uh, in the next few months, things are, are going to come to a head, but in the meantime. If there's anything that you heard tonight, um, on the health and the dust, I think that's, you know, those are the. Ones I'd be interested in, in addition to, you know, uh, leaving nothing behind, but those. Uh, private property rights, you know, it's an industrial area that kind of kisses up against the residential. Um, so.
That, 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 that is a, a co- it complicates this because that doesn't happen very often in the city of Cape Canaveral, but the, the original BDA. Did include provisions to address that. Um, and that was the wall that, that several of the folks have spoke about tonight. And. The problem is as this area expands, the aggregate storage area expands.
Illegally.
Illegally. The, the wall, there is no wall there. Um, because it, the wall was located and placed just for the initial location of the aggregate storage as it expands illegally. Um, there's, there's nothing there to protect the residents from the dust and the noise and the lights and everything. So that's, that's, that's one of the problems.
And the item will be when it's brought back to city council, council may be fully aware that they are operating in violation of their current binding development agreement.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, Dave, beans, they're in violation now and it seems like the residents are saying they're doing whatever they want anyway. Is code enforcement out there on a daily basis to see what's going on and to keep fining them? Um, I mean, how much evidence do we need to bring to the magistrate for? I mean, that doesn't look good if they're trying to get something from the council and they're doing things illegally now.
Yeah, code, code enforcement is aware of it. Um, I, I, I don't believe they go out there on a daily basis. Um, they have been in contact with the, uh, operators out there. As a matter of fact, um, they. Did a, uh, cease and desist order. They, they required them to stop working here a little bit ago because of, because of what they found. Um, so, and they were not happy about that, to put it mildly. They being Ambassador and the operators out there. Um, so, I mean, we are. Currently there is no, um, um, plan to bring them to the special magistrate until the council. Has an opportunity to act on the third, um, third, uh, amendment to the BDA.
Is there any reason we couldn't proceed to the special magistrate forthwith?
No.
Let's proceed.
Thank you. Yes.
Tomorrow, we'll proceed.
Yeah, I think that will help. Um, council, if we're okay, should you like to ask another question? We do need to get on with the rest of the agenda, but if you'd like to proceed. If you don't mind, can you come up to the mic?
In a lot of different areas, is that why they're clearing out on A1A? Like to the left side of the road? Yeah, wait for Leann.
Uh, there's, there's, there's two parcels that have been brought into the operation illegally. Um, one is there's a, there's a, approximately a nine acre tract. Just north of Portside Villa that, it's a rectangular, it runs east, west. It runs from North Atlantic all the way along the north side of Portside. Um, my understanding is, is that Ambassador Services is, is planning on purchasing the western, let's just say. Two acres of that parcel. And that is an area that they would like to expand into the binding development agreement to recognize their, their subsequent purch- their, their purchase. Early in twenty twenty four. They've also, uh, purchased a parcel just north of that. Um, um, since the, uh, since the last amendment to the binding development agreement. That is another parcel that they would like to bring into this, into the operation and recognize it through, through a third amendment. So those are the two parcels that will be new to the, uh, to the operation. That'll, that'll be what will be presented to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. I do have one more card. I think it's not related to this topic, but I do want to check online for those live streaming. If you wanted to speak, I didn't mention earlier, we're still in public comment. We ask that you raise your hand. Online, uh, I will recognize you and unmute you. As of right now, I do not see any hands. Raised, but I'm going to double check. And thank you all for, for live streaming at home. If you hear me seeing no hands raised, we'll come back to this, uh, final card here in public comment. Uh, Mr. Thomas Van Bossen, and while he's coming up, hello, Thomas. I do want to say thank you all staff and. Uh, for, for working on that and the, for bringing that to, to our attention. Uh, look forward to resolving the issue. Hello, Thomas.
Hello, I, uh, live off of five oh seven, uh, Adams Ave. Uh, I've been a resident for three years. Um, recently I was in a accident at the beginning of the year and one thing that kind of stood out for this city particularly is the evil charging program you guys had. Um, or have, uh, just want to say stand up job, keeping the program going and improving the program. Uh, recently you guys activated a bunch of new chargers, uh, a couple of weeks ago and that's super appreciated. Um, really happy to see the city, uh, continuing to improve and not just abandoning programs, but continue to grow them. So just want to say thank you.
That means a lot. Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate you taking the time to do that. Just clients one more time because I gave them late notice. I still see no hands online. And if I, uh, did not call your name, please raise your hand or come forward. I think we've completed all the cards. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Portion of the meeting and we're going to go ahead and move in, excuse me, public participation to the consent agenda. Tonight we have two items on the consent agenda. Uh, council, would you like to remove any of the two? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to approve the consent agenda as written, items one and two. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
And it was addressed partially for me today. However, on our franchise agreement. The liability for problems within the city if there was an accident. And I was told earlier, um, that these are normal coverages. This is on page eleven.
Let's do this, it sound, do you, let's pull this item and discuss it if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
And then we can go ahead, so.
And it may be just a quick answer.
Yeah, it, so Councilmember Jackson, does it need voter consensus? You can go ahead and pull the item two and we'll come, that'll be the first one we take up. Uh, and if we're okay with agenda item one, look for, or I'm sorry, so, uh.
We already.
The motion on the table is to prove it as written, um.
Do we need to change it because we had, uh, we were motion for one, two?
We have a motion on the floor, so we can amend the motion. Motion on the floor was to adopt items one and two. Councilmember Jackson wants to discuss two. Okay, so, uh, do we, uh, unanimous consent? Anyone opposed withdrawing the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion to approve item one.
I'll make a motion. We approve agenda item number one.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Jackson to approve. It's in a, agenda item number one. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes five oh. Item number two, Councilmember Jackson.
Okay, on page eleven of the contract.
Yes.
I know that this contract is due to a buyout, um, you know, to, to the existing vendor that we have being purchased. But, um, and I know that it ends in twenty twenty seven. However, and my question is this, and it may be very simply answered by Anthony, and I don't have to go any further with that. On page eleven, when we talk about the commercial general liability insurance coverages. That is extremely low for our market values in the city currently. Um, now, if that's normal coverages for this type of, uh, contract, that's fine, but I had questions on that, Anthony. Um, with this, since it's a, a very old thirty year old contract, almost.
Yeah, those are, it is an older contract and, um, those are minimum insurance coverages. Um, that, you know, they are required to give an insurance certificate, um, annually. So I don't know, their coverage may be more than that. Um, so, I mean, that's the minimum required by contract. They can insure for more. And then, um, you know, the city is also protected by the indemnity and hold harmless provision. Um, and, you know, we've had, you know, an incident in the past, um, where we've had to use. This agreement and successfully was a, were able to recover some damages that were done. Uh, to city, so, city infrastructure.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I, that was what my question was. Um, so Mayor Morrison, um, will make a motion to approve this.
Great.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson and a second by Councilmember Willis to approve agenda item number two as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Great.
Agenda item number two passes five oh. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item number three, which is ordinance ten twenty twenty three. We've got a few ordinances tonight before we head into this and, um. All the way through agenda item twelve, so, uh, we'll be going back and forth to the public. At, at any point you, there's an item that we read or hear. Um, tonight that you'd like to speak on, you do not, you can come forward. I will prompt public hearings, same for those listening at home. So with that being said, item number three, city attorney, ordinance ten twenty three, ten twenty twenty three, excuse me.
All right, this is ordinance ten dash twenty twenty three, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Bavard County, Florida. Amending the city of Cape Canaveral comprehensive plan future land use element by establishing. A mixed use MXU land use category and related objective and policies providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent. Ordinances and resolutions severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan. An effective date and legal status of the plan amendment. This is second and final reading and, uh, of this ordinance, also considered an adoption hearing. As you know, the council took action on this ordinance. Several months ago, the ordinance was transmitted to the state a- agency, uh, who reviewed the ordinance, provided no comments. Um, so the ordinance is ready for the city council's consideration this evening regarding adoption. And it's a policy, it's a policy decision, um, because it's an proposed amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. The mayor.
Thank you. Council, any questions for city staff at this point? And then we'll go to the public and, and bring it back and discuss if needed. Councilmember Jackson?
Okay, I, um, I know this is, you know, not at the, at the beginning of this process, however. I have some concerns with this as far as how it relates to, um, some of our existing. Properties that are already over density based on the number of units per square mile. I also have some questions for Anthony about how this. Um, proposal that we have this agenda item, how this will be. Setting precedences or if it may be setting precedences going forward with the Senate bill for live local. And the reason that I have those questions about live local is there's very specific wording within live local that takes away our ability to do. Our home rule here and control what we have going on here in our city. So it gives me some concern to that. Also, um, I'm open to these types of things if we're able to do it on a case by case basis. But I'm worried that we're setting a precedence where the state will control, since we currently have no mixed use properties of this nature. Where the state will be able to control what we do here locally versus us as a council. And a city being able to control our own development. So we have some, from what I understand, we have some properties that are over capacity on their density per square mile. And this, this live local act has a lot of wording that is absolutely against home rule. And that's very concerning to me. So Anthony, can you help me? Am I headed down the wrong path on this? How does this, how will this relate? And would it set precedences that we would have no control over later? And would it set precedences that we would have no control over later in our, you know, can our zoning and ordinances and permitting and everything else?
Well, that's a mouthful. That's a very legitimate concern. I mean, live local act is a, is a legitimate concern for all communities regarding, you know, the preservation of their commercial and industrial areas. You know, th- this ordinance shouldn't have an impact, I don't think, on live local. Because it is a a site-specific mixed use designation that has to be, you know, approved through like multiple steps, including a, an additional future land use map amendment, a zoning map amendment, a development agreement. So there's a lot of contingencies for the, at least, you know, with respect to the density aspect of, of live local. So it, on the density perspective, it should not impact, be impacted by live local. Because it's a mixed use, mixed use designation. You know, theoretically on the height, perhaps. You know, because the way live local is, is, is worded. But this ordinance provides a maximum height limitation of, of six stories. The city has some six-story, you know, buildings already that would be factored into live local. So, I mean, legitimate question. I'm not so sure this particular ordinance will have an impact relative like to live local analysis.
Okay. Section 125 dot 0103 of the live, uh, local ordinance or live local bill. Ordinances rules imposing price controls. Except as herein, provided no county municipality or any entity of local government shall adopt or maintain an effect and ordinance or rule which has the effect of imposing, imposing price controls, lawful business activity and all of that. That's just one wording as far as rent controls. However, it does go in and say that, that there is absolute wording where you literally cannot cite it, whatever it is. So if we allow multi-use or mixed use in this situation, it's not going to infringe upon that definition of multi-use. And it's because of the wording of the bill, like you're saying, Anthony. You know, this is a 30-year tax abatement if it's a multi-use property through the live local act. That's a long tax abatement. It's 20% of the units for affordable housing. I personally think that we're going to see housing correction from what I read in the industry publications for our city anyway. And for other areas in Brevard and the country. So as we look at how we implement mixed use, it's a concern to me that we're not setting precedences that'll tie our hands later. And we already have some examples of where we've increased density past what the current ordinances were. Or maybe that was before the current ordinances. And Todd, you might have information on that.
Well, there were certainly some things that have happened with property lot splits that were addressed by city code and those lots, let's not approve by the city, by the way, would result in what I would call increased de facto densities, not approved by the city. And my understanding of the live local law, it applies to the approved densities, the authorized densities, the allowed densities, I think is the word that it says. And I, I think we're good on that. And I, Anthony and I were talking about that earlier today, that those other acts that happened that were never allowed by the city but caused by others doesn't qualify as allowed densities.
Okay. That's good to know. And I think that that's helpful for all of us to be aware of. So in, in regards to the, the live local and this mixed use, that when the bill states things about the county and the county having the ability to control some of these, these aspects of the bill like the county must authorize multifamily mixed use residential as allowable in any areas owned for commercial or mixed use if at least 40% of the residential units in a proposed multifamily rental development are for a period of at least 30 years affordable. So when it refers to the county, who has the power in this situation as far as this act? Because, you know, we're, we're the municipality. Is this talking about, because it also talks about public lands. It gives them the ability to put that out for lease. And it has to be done. So those things are a concern to me because I do know we have some property here in our city that the city owns. And we don't want to give up anything in this, you know, in what we're voting on tonight. And these things concern me. And maybe I'm, you know, I'm going through this bill looking at it and I'm thinking this doesn't look good. So Anthony, help me there too, please.
There's, yeah, the, the whole, you look at the whole bill itself. You get a, acknowledge or understand that it modifies various sections of the Florida statutes. That language that you're reading with the county as an amendment, probably the chapter 125, which is only applicable to counties. But the same language is also in the bill, applicable to municipalities. So you can, don't worry about the word county in that, what you just read, just substitute municipality because the same language is in another section of this lengthy bill.
And this is what concerns me. I'm not against the concept of mixed use, you know, because we do need affordable housing. Like my opinion is we're going to see a housing correction. I, I see this, it's already happening in different cities in the country. However, I am worried about what precedents we're sitting going forward by. Some of the wording is even, it even, you know, becomes a little contradictory as far as whether we'll have any power or not on our own property here in our city. And I don't want to give up home rule. I don't want to give up our ability to control what our city is going to look like years from now. And we're talking 30 years. So can you make me feel better, Anthony?
Well, I, I don't think I can on the live local because you look at the city currently, they're all the existing commercial and industrial land today is, is potentially eligible for a live local project. Regardless of the fact that the city zoning code does not allow residential in commercial or industrial. So thi- this ordinance isn't going to impact the fact that we are, the city of Cape Canaveral has existing commercial and industrial land that's possibly eligible for a live local project. So that's not going to be impacted by this ordinance. This, this ordinance establishes the possibility of, of certain property owners in limited geographical areas of the city getting a mixed use designation. But that has, that would have to come to council for future action on a, on a site-specific basis.
Okay.
So in other words, I guess that the cake is, 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 is already baked on commercial, existing commercial or industrial lands in the city. On the live local.
And this, and, but this will give, this will, will still have control on these property or on the properties those define in this.
And the city council would have an, an extensive amount of control because this policy only lays the framework for these specific property, these specific areas for somebody to come to the city and make an application for a mixed use future land use designation. So if they make that application, then they have to go, come to the council for approval and they have to negotiate an acceptable development agreement with the city council for a mixed use development project.
Right.
Not, not a live local project.
So if someone came to us with a multi-use, which is through the live local act and wanted to develop that and we did not have this in place. Because this does, as I've read and discussed, this does define, gives limitations to what we're looking at doing. So that part of it is good. But let's say we didn't have this in place, Anthony. What would, what would happen?
Then the, the, the city does not have a, a a code to allow a mixed use, like a vertical mixed use development project.
Okay, so this is going to give us a definition.
Give the city the ability to consider the council approving a mixed use development project.
But we'll have no ability to control it on a live local act project. Other than what's defined here.
This, again, this, this ordinance wouldn't apply to commercial or, or the commercial or industrial existing today.
Okay.
If somebody wanted to do a live local, they would not be making an application for a mixed use designation. They would just come in and seek administrative approval by staff on a commercial, an existing commercial or industrial.
Okay.
They wouldn't have to deal with this, that you're, this policy that the council's considering.
Okay. That, thank you very much. That helped me. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for, for city staff? I do have one clarity. The seven acre minimum does not apply to the, the live work units.
Correct.
But it does apply to the section that was on the screen earlier, the bulleted list. I'm on page two of four of the agenda summary. The page price is larger mixed use projects with a minimum size of seven acres that permit a wide range of uses on a single parcel. The seven, I think the last time we talked about when you, when you do that map, there's not a lot of properties where this opportunity is available. And the process is intense with, you know, even before a development agreement, they have to come to the council, right? And then it goes back and then it's negotiated. And so we're touching it different than other development agreements much earlier in the process.
Much more intensive.
I'd also like to mention, Mayor, there's a, a heightened level of public community involvement too that we currently don't have. I mean, if a, if a mixed use developer wants to come in, you can see right on, on that same page, under the public involvement heading. Those, those are all steps that, that currently don't exist. And so the, the intent here is to get the community involved even before there's an application submitted to start shaping and guiding and molding what this project will look like. So it's, it's, uh, it, it was intentionally made that way. I think we've referred to it as folks have to earn their way into the community. They have to, they may not get exactly what they want, but it's, 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 it's meant to be that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, if there's not anything else, we can go to the public and obviously we'll come back to us again. This is a public hearing item. For those of you who'd like to speak, I've been listening in on the mixed use land use establishment that we're trying to put into our comprehensive plan. If there's any public comments, please come forward. And online, the same goes. I see no hands raised. This is the second and final reading. Seeing none. Go ahead and close public comment, bring back to the, and bring it back to the council here. The timeline, my first statement is the timeline for this. This is the comprehensive plan. It allows us the framework as our city attorney said. Then it's going to need to go back through, I guess, how many before it's finished, would it, is it going to be P and Z, a reading or two back to us?
For the.
By the end of, I'm sorry.
For the LDRs, for land development regulations.
Yes, the land development regulations. That process, I mean, this could take several months to get that right. Or is it going to come in one tranche, a whole?
My, my, my hope would be is we could bring it all in one tranche through the P and Z and then to council for two readings. Anthony, what are your thoughts on that? For the LDRs that relate to this.
For the, for the.
To live work. Those, those will, those will be the only LDRs that.
Yeah, the, the, the LDRs.
We're not going to be requiring to implement
the live work units and space provision. That would have to go through the ordinary process.
So the seven acre mixed use project wouldn't require any further LDRs?
No.
No.
The mixed use provision in here for the seven acre mixed use future land use designation would have to follow the process that's in this comprehensive plan amendment. There would be no, no need to do further land development regulations. But they would have to submit an application for a future land use map change and development agreement. And then it would have to go through the procedure that's in this ordinance. For this, for the minimum seven acre mixed use designation.
We'd also be processing a PD.
And then there's a, there's a PUD, there's a PUD. When you get to the zoning aspect of a, let's assume you had an application for an eligible mixed use project, minimum seven acres that meets all the criteria. And they negotiate, city negotiates a development agreement, all that has to be presented to the council. In addition, and concurrently, there would have to be a PUD zoning ordinance enacted to implement the project as well. That's all, that, that wouldn't, we would not require additional land development regulations to do that. It would have to go through this comprehensive application process and negotiations with the city council.
But Mayor, you're correct. We, we would have to process some land development regulations for our live work. And we would, as, as Anthony said, we would take that through the process. It would come back here because the comp plan amendment that is in front of you really doesn't have a lot of the details on live work, you know, exactly what that's going to look like and how that's going to work. Those details would be in the land development regulations. So I think once, if, you know, again, depending on what the council does here this evening, we'd, we'd start that or not start that here very, very shortly on, on, on preparing those land development regulations for live work.
And the application that they would submit, is that need to be created as well?
Yeah, we would have to create an application for the mixed use as well as the live work. So we'd be creating two new applications depending on what the council does.
And the the last meeting, we were talking about when you, when you apply this, the seven acres. Is there any reason why it was seven opposed to a lower number?
Well, again, I, I think the, you know, mixed use projects, because they're just that, you have various uses. Let's say, for example, you have residential and commercial. You know, you don't want to have a, a mix of uses on too small a site. You need to have some space to create proper internal access, you know, roads internally to make sure it all works well. You, you want to have a little bit of separation between the uses if appropriate. So I, I think trying to put a five pounds of stuff into a two-pound bag become, creates issues. That's really why the, the, the reason we have those two separate approaches. One is the live work, which is the smaller scale mixed use, if you want to call it that. For a, a, a one parcel or a one acre or two acre site. But these mixed use projects, I just don't think we're going to see a lot of them in the city. And we want to make sure that they happen in the right location because of the nature of mixed use. And therefore, we, we started looking at some locational criteria, as Anthony talked about earlier. Minimum acreage has to be on A1A or a couple of other roads. So it's just, you know, we didn't want, we didn't want the mixed use being built throughout the city. Because if you start introducing a commercial mixed. Because if you start introducing a commercial mixed use project into a residential area, say like along North Atlantic or other areas, that creates some compatibility issues. So that was, that was really the purpose of the seven acres. Can I say it's a, it's a scientific number? No, I cannot do that. I cannot do that. Um, but as, as we were looking at the map, um, seven acres, five acres, there was all, and quite a few more pieces that would have been eligible. And I, I think that really would have, um, there would have been a lot more eligible properties. I just didn't, you know. I think the planning and zoning board and the staff felt like seven was a good number. It, 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 it didn't, it allowed five or six sites in the city, but it didn't allow 15 or 20 sites.
Do we have it, without buying and aggregating other parcels, you know, common ownership between separate? There's less than 10.
Oh, yes.
Properties.
Yes.
Closer to five.
Closer to five.
Entire city that meets the seven acre minimum?
Correct.
Okay. And assuming, you know, while they might qualify, that whoever owns the property may not pursue that project and those properties might even get subdivided or who, who knows? Um, or, I, I mean, I, city manager and I were, were discussing this. Some of them are covered and one of the, some of the few un, undeveloped parcels that would meet the criteria. And so my, my thought is if, if we get down the road and we want to see a mixed use project, this comprehensive or land use plan here that we put together, the sort of the thing that was missing, because we've got mixed use language in our ordinances back to the econo, or under the um, EOD Economic Overlay District. And I remember the P and Z and you talking about, hey, we need to have this in our comp plan. If we, if we wanted to go back and change from seven to five, do we need to go back through the entire comp? Because it's spelled out.
Yeah, we would have to, if, if that's what the council wished to do in the future, we would have to go back and process another comp plan amendment. Um, and send it through the process, P and Z, city council, send it to the state. And do what we were going to be potentially doing here this evening is holding an adoption hearing. So yes, we would do, we would be required to do that. And, and, and you know, those, well, yeah.
Okay.
Dave Morrison, didn't we, didn't the council vote on the property on North Atlantic close to the port? And what was that vote?
The, the request was from a property owner that uh, the, this ordinance also allow mixed use on North Atlantic Avenue because he had property on North Atlantic. And it was explained, uh, that the planning and zoning board did discuss that in their recommendations. They opted not to include North Atlantic because as Dave says, there appears to be some compatibility issues because it's so, so residential, not a commercial, not a lot of commercial there. So uh, the, this council decided at first reading, we weren't going to add North Atlantic Avenue.
Okay, that was one of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be my concern is that, that, that was one property, but there's other ones that, that, that would be a good fit. I think we can point out the ones that do not. And it sounds like we would need to go back through a, a pretty intense process. And so uh, the density was my other, my, you know, 30 units per net acre. Today we're at 15. So we're talking about doubling the density. My, my concern is that that happens, and I know when I say happens, the process for anything to happen is going to come through the council, P and Z, as we've said over and over again. So it isn't turn on the light switch and then we're going to see projects being built. It's turn on the light switch, wait, and I'm trying to say if we do need to adjust, understand the process, how big this decision is tonight. Starting bigger makes sense. Uh, and, and then, but we could go down if there's. But when you think about seven acres and 30 units per acre, that gets us to could it, is it 210?
Yes.
Units could?
Up to 30 per acre. But yes, if, if the council decided to award the full Monti, then yes, it would be 210 units on seven acres.
So seven acres, and it's 75% of one land use or the other needs to be, or, right? It, it's, if it's mixed, 75% residential, could that satisfy the 210? And then in addition to the 210 units, they come in with a business that has traffic as well?
Yeah, that would, that would be my interpretation of the, of, of, of the ordinance, but Anthony can weigh in on that if you'd like.
I don't know how you would get 210 units on seven acres because it's net developable acres.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So you would have to accommodate, you know, other aspects of the project, right? So, and it has to be part of a, you know, there has to be a commercial component. So I mean, what that number would be in any given property, I could not, I couldn't tell.
So I think for Anthony's example, say we have a, let's say a seven acre tract and 25% of it has to be non-residential. So that would be 5.25 acres of residential. So we would times the 5.25 times to 30. So that would be 100 and 150, let's say 160 approximately, 157 or so. So.
But without this today, they could only do half that.
Right.
So 75, so it's they, 75 cars, assuming they were all single. And if they're smaller, you know, or at least 20 or 30 vehicles.
Yeah.
Versus 40, 50 or
Right.
100 vehicles.
Today, if they had a seven, that same track, seven acre tract, they could do 15 units across the entire seven acres. There is no, there is no 25% requirement for different use. So that would be 105 units across seven acres, seven times 15. With no requirement for a, another land use.
And do we have a map of the, where the seven acre parcels are located? Have we looked at that?
We haven't formally. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, we have not that.
Produced a map.
Put that into, onto a map for distribution, but.
This is a big decision. I'll, I'll, my, my thought is that I, there heard some good questions. We were sending it to the state the last time. Their feedback is, looks good and short. And, and my thought was that we we think through this one more meeting because I want to see these properties. But if this council chooses to go forward, it's a big, I would rather sacrifice one meeting in January than not uh, work through this a little bit longer because it's a big opportunity, but um, I don't want to have to send it back to the state. If we did make a change, say, uh, we, we, as council member Jackson said, expanded to another, added another street or a density change, does it need to go back to the state again?
I, I would think it would be, if it was a substantive change, it may, may have to, but you know, if we're at, talking about adding a street or something, probably not.
There's a lot, there's flexibility to make modifications to this policy before adoption. Then submit the adopted policy to the state.
Okay.
There, there's flexibility.
I would request one more meeting to work through this a little bit more. I mean, I'm very excited about it. And I, and I, and there was some public comments that came out today that I was kind of reading in, you know, the day of the meeting, trying to understand. So I do have a little bit of pause because it's deep and the new bill's being submitted. Um, is this, are there any prod, well, I don't think this is new territory for us. So.
Yeah, we, we, I'm, I'm aware of some, I'll, I'll characterize them as interested bystanders.
Well, that's good.
But we haven't, we haven't received any, any applications or anything like that. I think there are people are just watching, waiting to see what, what the council does with it.
Council, would y'all be okay for ta, tabling this till January? Anyone opposed?
No problem with it. I think we, I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it right.
Thank you. That's all the comments I have.
I have one quick question. On the seven acres. You, you've divided it by the 25% for commercial, got it down to 5.25. Does that also include any mitigation that has to be done for stormwater? Et cetera. Does that reduce that net developable land?
Yeah, I mean, net is a, is a specific term in the development business versus like a gross acreage. If it stated gross acres, you could just do a simple one, you know, 30 or 15 or whatever, across whatever acres you have. But net is, you have to start netting out certain things. And I think there's a definition in the ordinance that discusses that. Specific, your specific question.
Yeah, it's in the policy itself. Um, it's, it's six of 11 of the ordinance. Policy LU 1.8 point A4.
Mm-hmm.
It says the developable, developable area shall include the building site, the rec, recreational area, open space, swimming pools, entrance features, required landscape areas, parking drive setbacks, and similar spaces devoted exclusively to the approved mixed use, uses. But it does not include wetlands, conservation areas unless required and approved by the city council. Be incorporated into the project as an amenity. Land already developed, roadways, waterways, and lands unsuitable for development for the exclusive use of projects' residents and occupants because of topographical features or environmental reasons.
Mayor, I think to council member Willis's point about stormwater, if the stormwater is open space, then it would be excluded from the net available area.
Mm-hmm.
But a lot of times we know stormwater happens in vaults underground and can be underneath structures as well.
Makes sense.
And Mayor, I, I would like to bring up one other small point. If we could go to uh, page seven of 11, um, the top of that line, 241.
Mm-hmm.
We reference six stories. I, I was talking with Anthony about this earlier this afternoon. And I think it would be cleaner and more consistent with the way we, our measurement methodology is already expressed in other areas of the code to just change that to 65 feet rather than six stories because that makes it a little ambiguous.
Mm-hmm, 20 foot ceilings.
I would recommend we just change line 241, strike six stories and, and insert 65 feet.
As well as four stories. We're at that to 45.
Yeah, yeah.
45 feet. So rather than use stories, just convert it to a numerical number. We'd be 65, 45.
We've done that consistently throughout our code for many years with those numbers.
So that change in here, what, what, what is the line?
Uh, 241 on page seven.
Yep. Okay. 241. So we would, but shall not exceed, strike six stories in, say, 65?
Yes, sir.
Is there any need at this level to get, does the, the mean, how we measure?
No, that's already addressed.
Meeting.
Yeah, we have that.
Meeting height and all that will apply for this. So we don't need to get technical. Um.
As well as the reference to four stories.
The next sentence.
45. So if the council's going to postpone this.
Yeah.
Ordinance till January, um, what the managers is, is saying, we would, the, the ordinance will come back. It'll be 65 feet and 45 feet rather than referencing stories. Just to be um, a little cleaner uh, for staff when they apply it.
Mm-hmm. I think that would be less ambiguous, yes. Finite, clear, measurable. Um, and then we would have to change our land use code to, well, I think that one says four stories or 45 feet. Six stories or 65 feet. So. But, okay.
This, this amendment makes it very clear.
Council member Willis, any more questions for you? Council member Davis?
No.
Mayor for Tim?
No.
Okay, we've taken it to the public. We're back here. Um, so if there's nothing else, I I make, I move that we table the item till January.
Is procedurally under the new law to preserve the advertisement, the, the motion would be to postpone.
Thank you.
To a date certain, which my, based on my calendar, it'd be January 16th.
Okay.
2024, that would have to be in the motion at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
It did.
And that would be preserving the advertisement.
The date, January 16th, 2024, you said 6:00 PM. It doesn't need to be that specific time certain, or does that?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was asking. And we are uh, city clerk on that day. We're just verifying that is the next meeting date.
It is.
And this will allow us to not have to re-advertise and preserve it? So the uh, motion would be uh, postponed due to, postponed to a date certain of January 16th, 2024, at the 6:00 PM regular city council meeting? Okay.
Right.
And um, Mayor, is, is there consensus that uh, staff should develop a map showing parcels that are currently seven acres or more along the eligible streets that is not future aggregations of parcels, just actually seven acres or more currently?
I was curious. I think that the qua, I was more interested in the quantity. Where they are is, is interesting. Um, I think it becomes more narrow when you look at them. It just becomes more difficult properties. I think.
We're going. So going, I know you work with Space Coast Transportation and all of that. And I would think that we would want to look at that as far as property locations based on traffic flow. And you might have more information on that. So would that, you know, as we're talking about looking at that on the map? Um, you know, you might have some insight on impact for that.
Well, we can, we can certainly get the, the traffic data on it. Um, it's going to be limited because of existing, what's existing. It can't tell you what is going to be happening in the future because we don't know what's going to be developed and how it's going to be done. Um, plus you got to factor in the development on A1A that is going to look like happened in '27. So that changes everything as well. Um, but yeah, we can, we can certainly get the, the traffic data that, that utilizes those streets.
I think it'd be interesting to see that because if we're planning on where these locations are on the seven acres, traffic planning is a big part of that with the amount of density.
Want to talk about traffic?
Yeah, just, just briefly. Um, yeah, yeah, for, for any development project in the city, they, they are required to submit a concurrency application. And that looks at a number of public utilities and services to include transportation. And for a project, a mixed use project, they will be required to submit that as well as a traffic study. Um, by project, looking at its, the project's impacts on the city streets. And our traffic studies are tiered depending on how many new trips the project will generate. And a mixed use project of this size will require the, a, a very, very um, in-depth analysis on how it will impact city streets and city traffic patterns. Um, so that, that, that will be addressed. And the bottom line is if it, if it um, um, degrades our level of service on any of the impacted streets, be below what we've adopted as, as a city. The project either doesn't happen or they have to make um, improvements, say a, a, a new lane, um, a new light, um, new XL, D cellings, what, whatever the case is. Um, we wouldn't know that until the development's actually being looked at. But yeah, the traffic is one of the things that will be very closely looked at on a, on a project such as this.
Case by case basis.
Yes, yes.
Now, the process is thorough. And to answer your question. And to answer your question, a map count, would we like to see an idea geographically of where these are?
It's just, the, we can certainly produce that. The the thing that's not as helpful about it is that it doesn't, it won't show those aggregate, aggregatable concepts, because we would just be guessing at an aggregatable concept. We can only show those things that are seven acres now.
Yeah, just even if we just looked at just citywide, everything over seven acres or, you know, with that, I would, yeah, because if you get a one, a three, and a and a four, right? None of those would be
Yeah.
triggered, but they own them all, they aggregate, and and now a project is
Yeah.
What we thought was a property now didn't exist, now becomes a reality.
We could certainly do it for the seven acres or more today.
Yeah, it's nothing fancy, just getting an idea would be helpful.
And also, to be clear, you mean throughout the city or only throughout the eligible areas of this?
Definitely the eligible areas.
I would just limit it to the eligible areas.
That'll give us an idea, and I mean, you could that's perfect, thank you.
We'll take care of that, Dave, let's make sure that happens for next month.
Thank you very much. Any more questions on this one, council? I can go ahead and our city attorneys help move to, I make a motion to postpone to a date certain of January 16th, 2024 at 6:00 PM, the regular city council meeting.
And the amendments to line 241 on page seven?
Yep.
That's not, that's out of order there. The postponement is fine. But we're going to make those changes that we talked about. But on the motion to postpone, you can add a substantive change
Okay.
You know, the main item being presented.
I'll second.
I got a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Willis to postpone to a date certain, January 16th, 2024, 6:00 PM, regular city council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor pro Tim Kellen?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you. That concludes item. Getting back on track here, that was item number three. We're now moving on to item four. We are at 7:35 PM. And just kind of looking forward, four is kind of stands on its own different, but the remaining are from five through 12, to give a little hope, should move a little quicker, not that we we won't have questions and comments on them, but they're they're sort of the same change for different properties. So ordinance number 1223, item four. City attorney?
Ordinance number 12-2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning, article nine, supplementary district regulations, division two, off-street parking related to minimum parking requirements for restaurants, bars, clubs, and lodges, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance. If you recall, at first reading, the council gave direction to add clubs and lodges to the proposed ordinance. So that that was done. I just need to point out, when when this document got converted to PDF, you'll see that a couple of places, the Z in zoning was 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 removed. The the actual ordinance itself has, you know, a Z in it, but for some reason, when it converted, the Z disappeared, and I think two places. And I don't know why PDF does that, but it did. So in addition, I just want to draw the council's attention. I believe you've all met with the manager and discussed the fact that given the the objective to include clubs and lodges under the minimum, eliminating the minimum onsite parking, staff did a rough analysis out there to determine what what establishments would actually fit under clubs and lodges. Realized that there there is not a definition of clubs and lodges in the in the in the current zoning code. So to add some color to the intent of the ordinance, which is to eliminate the minimum parking requirement for clubs and lodges, we came up with a definition, which is on page two of four of the ordinance. It's my understanding that, you know, from staff that they want to propose a little addition to that definition. So but what we've done is we gave you a little handout there. And the highlighted portion in yellow is staff's proposed additional language to the definition of clubs and lodges. So in essence, the definition would stay the same as proposed, but add the language and is licensed as a restaurant and/or alcoholic beverage establishment. And that, you know, that would be a requirement to fit under clubs and lodges definition, which in turn would provide an elimination of the minimum parking requirements for that particular use, which is allowed in several zoning districts in the city's zoning code.
Happy to answer any questions, staff as well is here to answer questions.
Questions for staff?
Any questions for city staff, city attorney? This is a public hearing item, we'll go to the public. Prior, answer anything now? I've got one. The city manager and I were discussing this, that this statement, but not primarily for profit. I was concerned about what that means. And could we go to more of a IRS designation or something that's? Or does that work? Primarily not-for-profit, is there a better? 501(c)(3), all the 501(c).
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a tax lawyer, but there are various designations under tax code. There's also a designation under the corporate statute where you could get incorporated as a corporation, as a nonprofit corporation, even if you don't have a tax-exempt status. So the, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to capture all of the the not-for-profit type organizations through a tax code reference or or statutory reference. But the gist of it was that these these establishments are not what you would consider, you know, customary business operation, operating a business, they're more fraternal in nature. So we tried to capture, you know, the fraternal nature, the like a veterans, veterans group, or, you know, a union hall, or, you know, some other you know, type of organization that typically has members. It's not open like a like a businesses to receive customers in and out. That's the essence of what we tried to capture. And I don't know how to put all the tax code references and, you know, statutory references to cover nonprofit. I mean, back and looking at it.
I was just yeah, I think all the 501(c)s, I guess, what what would not work, right? Like, give me, I guess, an example would be a hotel restaurant. The bad example, thank you, yeah.
Just really don't, I went and talked to our business tax receipt clerk. We just really don't have a lot of clubs and lodges located in the city. We have a lot of HOAs and condo associations, but they're really not a club or a lodge as 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 we've proposed in the definition. So if you take those off the table, it's just really not that many.
And also, the VFW and American Legion, where this started, you have to be a member to go in there. It's not operated as a regular business at all, you have to be a member of the.
Right.
And when you add the licensed restaurant or out, they carry a restaurant license and an alcohol.
I can vouch for that, I've I've tried to get into the VFW a few times, they won't let me in.
Well, there have been a couple of times because you guys open it up for certain events. And I like the way that Anthony has written in here that say tend to be restricted to members. So I think I think that works.
Yes.
I'm totally fine with it, as long as, yeah, we can see a path. I guess how we would verify that they're not primarily for profit, how would we do that? It's my.
Well, I think that language is fairly permissive. It's it's more of a descriptor of what it should look like. As you couldn't use this definition so easily for a regulatory tool when it comes to profit, because it's more of a description of what it typically looks like. Just like on the tend to be restricted to members, it's not restrictive. It's actually just descriptive.
We don't really have a big country club, like a Suntree Country Club, but they're they're members, they're primarily, but they've got a ton of parking. But then I think I'm good. I I also wouldn't care about their minimum. I as much, I know they're they're not going to put, they're going to put enough parking more than likely. In in our circumstance, if if we can't think of anything that where this would would be an issue of I am very happy we added this in. I think it's great that the VFW and American Legion and any other type that fits this use can work. So council? Any questions? That was all I had.
Ready for a motion?
No, again, it's a public hearing item, so, but we'll come back. So anyone who'd like to speak, this is a public hearing item, we'll go to the public. This is ordinance number 122023, amending chapter 110 of the zoning supplementary district regulations, division true, off-street parking related to minimum parking requirements for restaurants, bars, clubs, and lodges, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances. I don't see any hands raised online. Anyone like to speak? Come forward, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And yes, looking for a motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Assuming this gets approved tonight, our, one of our first actions tomorrow will be to cancel those code enforcement cases related to parking violations of restaurants and bars.
Let me process, okay, so there's code enforcement violate, notice of violations.
Yes, they would be removed. Assuming this gets approved tonight, a second reading.
And thank you for sharing that, and will the property owners be notified?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 122023 with the amended language. And as licensed as a restaurant or alcohol beverage establishment. I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor pro Tim Kellen, second by Councilmember Jackson. The amended language was what changed between last meeting and this meeting. But we're not amending anything tonight as written tonight.
No, the handout.
Oh, I'm sorry, the amended language for the handout and we got a copy, great. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor pro Tim Kellen?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance number 1223 passes 5:00, thank you all, that's exciting, I'm excited about that. It's 7:45, 46, let's take a 10-minute break, recess, we'll come back and we can, I think, get through item, through these remaining items smoothly. And we're wrapping up 2023 before we know it. 10-minute break and we'll read adjourn, let's say, let's just say, 7:47. Yeah. 7:57. How about 8 o'clock? Okay, it is 8:01 PM. Call the meeting back to order. We're at a regular council meeting here. We are down on item number five. This is ordinance number 012024. This is, item number five has two ordinances related to it. And really, item five is the property. Our city attorney is going to read both of these ordinances. And then we will, any technical questions we can ask, we'll go to the public, one public hearing. We'll bring it back and then we'll have two separate votes per ordinance. And we'll do that all the way through these. And when we get to item number six, well, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So, city attorney?
Yes, sir. Okay. Item number five, two ordinances. I'll read them both then by title only. Ordinance number 01-2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of several parcels of property legally described as Lot 1 through 8 Ocean Court, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 17 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 8657, 8659, 8661, 8663, 8665, 8667, 8668, and 8671. Maple Court, from C1 commercial to R2 residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted than legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. The companion zoning ordinance is ordinance number 02-2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots 1 through 8 Ocean Court, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 17 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 8657, 8659, 8661, 8663, 8665, 8667, 8668, and 8671. Maple Court, from the current C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property to this ordinance is more particularly depicted than legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and an effective date. Again, this is first reading of this administrative future land use map and zoning map amendment. It's also a public hearing item. And that's it, mayor. I'm not sure if staff has a presentation or not.
Slide.
Your monitor doesn't work, Dave. Okay.
This slide, again, just identifies the parcels, addresses.
And the map doesn't show it, but this is on Ocean Woods Lane, right in front of Ocean Woods, just in front of the security gate.
The property to the south is commercial on Central, that corner lot there. I believe that's the spaceman storage, roughly. So that's going to stay commercially zoned. So they abut against that. We're not administratively rezoning that. The properties to the west there in the map, it's, have we rezoned those yet? There, I think there is a zoning map back there.
Spaceman storage.
Mm-hmm. Oh, so, yeah.
Those ones to the west have.
They have. Okay. Thank you. This is on Maple Court. Thank you, city attorney, for reading that land use map, zoning map. We'll do them individually. We spoke back there. Is it Matt? Matt was sharing with me. He lives on Maple Court. And he understood this is one of two readings, but he's talking, you know, through it and understanding the process. His neighbors, if they have a concern in him, or they want to speak on this item, what's the best way to do that, I think, was what we talked about. And I said, you know, expressing those to city staff, to you, is certainly coming to a public meeting, as you did. But in the event that the neighbors in there wanted to do something different, would that be an issue? Or they wanted to not be rezoned? In the past, we've addressed it, I think, on a case-by-case basis. And so I think the answer, I didn't want to give it to him, is we would have to look at it and consider on a case-by-case basis for each property owner, not on the...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I mean, if I was, this is the first time I'm aware of this particular concern. So, yes, the council has the ability. As a matter of fact, there will be one of the ordinances this evening. There's an individual that's been asked to be removed from the consideration, from the ordinance. So it'll be very similar to what we're doing in that situation. We'll get a little bit more in detail into that when we get to that ordinance. But yeah, there's a process. Just let staff know and we'll, now, in this case, we're going to be, once we have first reading, we'll be transmitting these proposed amendments up. Well, no, we're not. These are small scales. We don't even need to do that. Yeah, just come talk to staff and we'll make those adjustments prior to second reading.
I think for the benefit of the person, I don't know what his concern is, but this administrative rezoning process that the city has been endeavoring to complete, this is phase four. You know, the existing use of the property is residential and it's in a commercial zoning designation. So it's a non-conforming use. So the general objective of these administrative rezonings is to have the zoning map be consistent with the existing residential use on the property, because there are obviously some negative, potential negative impacts for being a non-conforming use. But if, you know, if property owners have expressed some concerns with the administrative process, you know, to staff and the council, then, you know, the council can consider whether or not to proceed with this process. But the intent is to try to make, you know, the zoning and the future land use map consisting, consistent with the existing residential use.
Understood. Matt, if you need to fill in anywhere, I think if you heard that, you're more than welcome to come forward. But in short, is I encourage you to reach out to David. You'd do the best.
Yeah, myself.
David Dickie's our director. And I think he'd be able to help you and understand. It's, from my conversation, it's not one way or the other. You want to understand. And you're talking with your neighbors. And the next meeting, January 16th, is when I would anticipate we would have final reading. So certainly, being involved before that might really help that meeting go the way. I think you hope.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody, sooner than later, get with me, like tomorrow, if you're available, or whenever, whenever you're available. We'd be happy to meet. And as the mayor said, counsel, you, I mean, there's pluses and minuses, I understand, to both sides. But we'd be happy to talk to you and give you our advice. And you can make the final decision with the council.
Counsel, any more questions before we go to the public? Hey, it's a public hearing item. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. And those of you listening online can participate as well by raising your hand if you'd like to speak on this item. Ordinance number 012024 and ordinance number 022024. So, first two ordinances of 2024, I will update it for that, because second reading, I guess, would follow in the year. Either one of those, which is the zoning map and the land use map, can come forward and speak on. This is for properties on Maple. This is for properties on Maple Court. We've heard the one concern. Would you like to speak, Matt? Are you okay? Okay, we have some time and obviously you can reach out to any council members along the way as well. Uh, if you, if you need anything, but I have confident that, that Dave can help. And maybe letting him know exactly which addresses yours can get him even thinking tonight to see. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. I guess my, my only statement would be, uh, unless Matt comes forward and says, I want to hold off on this, I would support moving forward, knowing we have a second reading. So out of abundance of caution, I want to make sure I understood you. If I vote in support tonight and we learn more later, it doesn't mean we can't vote the other way, so.
Oh, I live on, oh, I live on eight six, eighty six fifty nine Maple Court. And, uh, just that. The main concern, I believe, uh, that person may have already reached out. You mentioned somebody had reached out earlier this evening, um, is really just, um, the Airbnb restrictions of having the minimum of seven days. I was informed that they, that that person, that a person's specific property, if they're already an Airbnb, already have an Airbnb, they'll be grandfathered in and they would still have the freedom to not have the seven day restriction. Um, I guess the concern would be, um, for the rest of those properties there, even though they won't have Airbnbs, at least they don't currently have Airbnbs. There are a couple, one of them including myself, that, um, are considering turning it into one in the near future, although, um, be very selective with, um, allowing to stay there. We won't be grandfathered in. I, I think the only concern, not the only concern, but the largest concern is that, um, that restriction. If, uh, if that cul-de-sac is able to maintain that, um, the privilege of being grandfathered in, I think everyone there would be, would have happily agree to this. Outside of any potential, uh, property tax concerns that I may or may not be aware of. I think that's really the main concern that people, the people, the residents of Maple Court have. That restriction.
Thank you for sharing that. And I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, that's from my, my current information. So that may or may not change in the near future when I get to speak to them further.
Mayor, I can add that the, the, the Brevard County Tax Collector, um, bases the, the ad valorem millit rate on the use of the property, which is residential and it's not changing to anything else, staying residential, that shouldn't be changed as a result of this rezoning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. I know I closed it, but I appreciate him clarifying that. I've got, uh, back here to the council. Mayor Pro Tim, no question. Anyone else? Seeing none. City clerk, oh, council member Jackson.
So our city attorney said there were consequences.
As the residential use on the property is, is currently a non-conforming use because, um, residential is not a permitted use in the commercial, uh, future land use designation and zoning designation. So under the city's code, um, if the non-conforming use is, um, uh, destroyed and goes away, um, then technically you can't rebuild it. It would have to, um, become a use that is allowed under the, under the current C one zoning. So the residential use could potentially be impacted, um, regarding, uh, you know, if it's destroyed. Um, so that's one potential negative consequence. Um, there are other, other negative consequences that I think that David mentioned in the past, um, that the non-conforming status of, of, of a residential may impact some, uh, some property owners regarding, um, you know, loans and, um, title, um, and trying to convey their property. Um, so, so there, there's, there's some, as you know, non-conforming uses don't get the full benefit of, of, um, you know, the, this current zoning designation because the law requires non-conforming uses to eventually become conforming. I mean, that's the, that's, that's what happens when, you know, the, it's changed. So, you know, this property is currently, has a non-conforming status. So that's why it's, it's been selected, at least administratively at this point, to be considered for rezoning, to remove that non-conforming status. So there's no issue. But he raises, uh, the gentleman raises another issue, you know, what happens to those that have a, you know, uh, an, an existing Airbnb? Uh, because the city's vacation rental ordinance permits, um, non-conforming residential in commercial areas to rent for less than seven days.
Thank you. I wanted to understand those negative consequences. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City clerk?
There's no motion.
Oh, sorry. Looking for a motion to adopt?
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion. We adopt ordinance number oh one two zero two four and oh two. Oh, just one. Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim to adopt and second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number oh one twenty twenty four. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance oh one twenty twenty four passes five oh.
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, ordinance number zero two dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to adopt ordinance number oh two twenty twenty four. Any discussion? This is on the zoning map? None. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance number oh two twenty twenty four passes five oh. Moving on to item number six. City attorney?
Okay, uh, this, this ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of several parcels of property legally described as lots one through fifteen, Park Villas, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book thirty eight, page seventy four of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh four, one oh six, one oh eight, one ten, one twelve, one fourteen, one sixteen, one eighteen, one twenty, one twenty two, one twenty four, one twenty six, one twenty eight, one thirty, one thirty two, and one thirty four, Washington Avenue, from C one commercial to R two residential, providing, uh, the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A. Attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and corp- corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots one through fifteen, Park Villas, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book thirty eight, page seventy four of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh four, one oh six, one oh eight, one ten, one twelve, one fourteen, one sixteen, one eighteen, one twenty, one twenty two, one twenty four, one twenty six, one twenty eight, one thirty, one thirty two, and one thirty four, Washington Avenue, from the current C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and effective date. This is first reading, also a public hearing item regarding this particular piece of property, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney? Any questions for staff or staff, anything that we need to add to this one? One of these coming up there, there's a change that needs to happen. Is this the one?
There is a, there, there was an issue with the, um, the title block on this one as far as, yeah. So we're gonna, we're gonna make some small changes to it before second reading.
Got it. Okay, counsel, anything else? Public hearing item. Those of you listening online are here. If you'd like to speak on this, this is ordinance number oh three twenty twenty four and ordinance number oh four twenty twenty four, uh, around the Park Villas. Property addresses listed by our city attorney. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. Looking for a motion to adopt?
I make a motion. We adopt ordinance number oh three twenty twenty four.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number oh three twenty twenty four. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance number oh three twenty twenty four passes five oh. Motion to adopt ordinance oh four twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number oh four twenty twenty four.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance number oh four twenty twenty four passes five oh. Moving on to the next agenda item, number seven. City attorney?
Hey, ordinance, uh, zero five dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation for several parcels of property legally described as the Oaks condominium phases one, two, three, and four, and located at two oh one International Drive from C one commercial to R three residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as the Oaks condominium phases one, two, three, and four, and located at two oh one International Drive from the current C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R three medium density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and an effective date. This two is first reading and a public hearing items. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Staff, any comments or things on this that we need to address tonight?
No, no, Mayor, I think we're good on this one.
Any questions, counsel, for city staff or comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt. Oh, sorry.
No, we'll be, be back, I think, very quickly. This is a public hearing item. If anyone would like to speak on ordinance number oh five twenty twenty four, ordinance number oh six twenty twenty four around the Oaks condominiums phases, and the address is read by our city attorney, please come forward. Seeing none here and none online, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Councilmember Willis?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh five twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance oh five twenty twenty four. And further discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance oh five twenty twenty four passes five oh. Ordinance number oh six twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh six dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance oh six twenty twenty four passes five oh. Moving to the next agenda item, number eight. City attorney?
Hey, ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of several contiguous parcels of property generally located between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue and west of Pointcetta Avenue, which are generally described as lots one through four of the Velagio Town Homes, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book fifty five, page ninety two of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at one oh three, one oh five, one oh seven, and one oh nine, Washington Avenue. Vacant tax parcels twenty four dash thirty seven dash twenty three dash CG dash one dash four and twenty four dash thirty seven twenty three dash CG dash one dash five, located on Washington Avenue. And tax parcel twenty four dash thirty seven dash twenty three dash CG dash one dash sixteen, located at one twenty eight Adams Avenue in lots fourteen A, fourteen B, fourteen C, and fourteen D of the Breeze Way Town Homes, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book thirty one, page fifty nine of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at one twenty, one twenty two, one twenty four, and one twenty six Adams Avenue from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. And the companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance eight zero eight dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment of several contiguous parcels of property generally located between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue and west of Pointcetta Avenue, which are legally described as lots one through four of the Velagio Town Homes, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book fifty five, page ninety two of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at one oh three, one oh five, one oh seven, and one oh nine, Washington Avenue. Vacant tax parcels twenty four dash thirty seven dash twenty three dash CG dash one dash four and twenty four dash thirty seven dash twenty three dash CG dash one dash five, located on Washington Avenue. Tax parcel twenty four dash thirty seven dash twenty three dash CG dash one dash sixteen, located at one twenty eight Adams Avenue in lots fourteen A, fourteen B, fourteen C, and fourteen D of the Breeze Way Town Homes, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book thirty one, page fifty nine of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at one twenty, one twenty two, one twenty four, and one twenty six Adams Avenue from the current C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A. Attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and an effective date. This is first reading and also a public hearing item. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Item number eight, ordinance number oh seven twenty twenty four and oh eight twenty twenty four. Any comments from city staff or questions from the council before we go to the public? Seeing none. This is a public hearing item. Oh, seven twenty twenty four and ordinance number oh eight twenty twenty four. Seen the map? It's Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue. We have entered the presidential streets now. I think this is our first in the hundred block at least. Anyone like to speak on this? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're listening online. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Back to the council. For a motion?
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number oh seven twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Who got it?
You can want, it doesn't matter. Give it to Don.
Yeah. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis. To adopt ordinance number oh seven twenty twenty four. Further discussion, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance number oh seven twenty twenty four passes five oh. Looking for a next?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh eight dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Jackson to adopt ordinance number oh eight twenty twenty four. There's further discussion, seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance oh eight twenty twenty four passes five oh. And the paragraphs get longer as we head into our courageous city attorney who will tackle number nine.
I was just telling the city manager, you can make a Dunkin' Donuts run on this one.
Don't tell me that.
Yeah. Ordinance, ordinance number zero, zero nine dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation for several parcels of property legally described as lots one and two of Jefferson Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book forty-nine, page twenty-six of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh eight, one ten, one twelve, and one fourteen Jefferson Avenue, lots five, six, seven, and eight of San Thomas Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page nine of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one sixteen, one eighteen, one twenty, and one twenty-two Jefferson Avenue, lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of San Thomas Villas Phase Four, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page eighty of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one twenty-four, one twenty-sixth, and one twenty-eight Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two of Adams Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book forty-eight, page six of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh seven, one oh nine, one eleven, and one thirteen Adams Avenue. Lots one, two, three, and four of San Thomas Villas, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-five, page thirteen, in the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one fifteen, one seventeen, one nineteen, and one twenty-one Adams Avenue. Lots nine, ten, and eleven of San Thomas Villas Phase Three, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page fifty-five, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one twenty-three, one twenty-five, and one twenty-seven Adams Avenue from C one commercial to R two residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. And the companion rezoning ordinance is... Sorry about that, but I just had technical difficulties with my iPad. And go to number ten. Back at it. Ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots one and two of Jefferson Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book forty-nine, page twenty-six, in the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh eight, one ten, one twelve, and one fourteen Jefferson Avenue, lots five, six, seven, and eight of San Thomas Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page nine, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one sixteen, one eighteen, one twenty, and one twenty-two Jefferson Avenue, lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of San Thomas Villas Phase Four, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page eighty, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one twenty-four, one twenty-six, one twenty-eight Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two of Adams Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book forty-eight, page six, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh seven, one oh nine, one twelve, and one thirteen Adams Avenue. Lots one, two, three, four of San Thomas Villas, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-five, page thirteen, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one fifteen, one seventeen, one nineteen, and one twenty-one Adams Avenue. Lots nine, ten, and eleven of San Thomas Villas Phase Three, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat book thirty-six, page fifty-five, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one twenty-three, one twenty-five, and one twenty-seven Adams Avenue from the current C one low-density commercial zoning district designation of the city to the city R two medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for their appeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions severability and an effective date. This is first reading, also a public hearing item there.
Thank you, City Attorney. That deserved a slow clap. Well done. I think you could have went to the Cocoa Beach Starbucks, not the local Dunkin' Don't. Thank you, thank you. That's all on Adams and Jefferson Avenue. Any technical questions? I see the top is highlighted. Red?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is, these next two ordinances, oh nine and ten. We do have a property owner at one oh seven Adams. It's designated with a red star in the graphic that you should have up on your monitor. And her name is Gina Poor. She has requested that her parcel be removed from consideration from these two ordinances for much the same reason that was previously indicated by this gentleman here in the audience is that she has a long-term renter in her unit. However, she is, wants to keep the option open for a vacation rental. And so, for that purpose, she's requested it be removed from consideration. Thank you.
And is that the only one out of this slew of addresses?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Just to get oriented here, Dave's auto body, a commercial use, right across the street there.
To the north.
On the corner of Adam, yes. Yes, to the north.
Which is up in this graph.
And so, tonight, if we adopt this, well, we'd have to, we'd need to, if we chose to, to remove one oh seven, we could essentially adopt the, the both maps, land use and zoning, and exclude one oh seven from that.
Yeah, we, we would make the necessary changes to the ordinance prior to second reading.
The easiest motion would say, as written with an exception?
With the removal of one oh seven Adams.
Okay. Counsel, that's what we have to consider. Before going to public comment? Any questions? Seeing none? It is a public, uh, hearing item for ordinance number oh nine twenty twenty four and ordinance number ten twenty twenty four on the addresses listed by our city attorney on Adams and Jefferson Avenue. If anyone would like to speak from home, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Back to the council. So, if, I think we, we can get it done in one motion with the exception, if we're okay with that, or are we okay with excluding that corner lot? We would need to change what they, because it's not written that way, right?
Correct. It's, it's written to include.
To include. So, we would have to amend the proposed...
And the property owners wants to proceed this way, for sure.
Yes, we...
Because they're gonna, they're gonna remain a non-conforming residential structure, so.
Yes, city, city staff discussed this issue with the property owner that she would remain a non-conforming lot, or, or use, excuse me.
Dave, can you read the email into the record?
Sure. Um, thank you, Kyle. I appreciate, Kyle is our senior planner who has been in communication with, with Jenny. Thank you, Kyle. I appreciate your good communication. Let me know if I need to formalize this or fill out any forms, but just know that I definitely want to be grandfathered and kept commercial status. Thank you and have a good rest of your week. And there's a number of four or five emails back and forth, but that was the culminating email that we received on November fifteenth.
During those conversations, Dave, was she aware of the ramifications of remaining? I just want to make sure.
Yes, she was. Um, and Kyle was very specific in, in counseling her that there was, you know, certainly, um, some issues with remaining non-conforming, but she understood that and decided to roll with her commercial zoning.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure she understood.
Yes, yes, we were, we were very clear with her.
Being sensitive to the neighbors, I think we can all understand, living next to short-term rentals, if you had to pick, right, from our perspective, a property that is on North Atlantic, I mean, can you, if, if it was, uh, you know, what, one twenty-five, right, or in, in the middle of those? I don't think we've been faced with a decision just quite like that. They've all been sort of a budding and existing commercial that we're, we're going to keep commercial. Um, and like I said, Dave's, you know, heavier commercial use activity across the street. I don't have a, a, a big issue with it being on that, you know, street-facing corner lot. Her neighbors might be concerned, but I think, well, we've got one more reading of this. I'm afraid if she'd be willing to come in and, and talk to us and understand, but it sounds like Kyle did.
Yeah, if, if, if the mayor and the council would like, I can certainly read a, a paragraph from one of the emails that Kyle sent her describing exactly what the, what the, what the issues would be, should she decide to be removed from the, from the ordinance. But she was, she was planning on being here this evening. She, one of her parents is in hospice, and so, she was unable to get here this evening. But I think, I, I think she was planning on being here at second reading.
Then when you could leave it, one suggestion is just leave it as is, first reading, and then give her an opportunity in January to come, and then you can remove it at that point. Because if you remove, if you remove one oh seven Adams now, you won't be able to put it in for second reading.
And if we could, we'd have to go through a couple of readings, probably.
And have to, we'd have to go through the whole rezoning process.
As long as she understands our intent, that is to listen, and I mean, I, I would support it tonight. Maybe that changes between two meetings that her, unless staff has a major concern.
I think that's a good idea. Just please correspond with her and ask her to respond in email that she still wants it gone, so the council has that fresh information for January.
He did speak with her in the last few days, but it was verbal conversation, but yes, we'll do that. We'll, we'll get it, we'll get her.
And I have one more question, Dave. Um, have we had, I know it's a long-term rental that she has, but rentals can be rentals, so. Have we had any complaints for noise, parking, or anything from that address from her neighbors?
Ooh. I'm not aware of any complaints, but I'm not saying we haven't received any. I, I can tell you, this is not one of the problem properties.
Okay.
Again, it's a long-term rental, and typically, we don't have, uh, complaints on the long-term, um, long-term renters. I think this, the current tenant is in there for a year.
Okay, okay.
That's what I, that's what I mean by...
I just was curious if we'd had that scenario in that location.
Yeah.
I have a question. I can't remember offhand, are those all attached townhouses? Are they, like, share a wall?
Some of them do.
As I say, some of them do.
The one, the subject property does not. That's a single-family home.
Is it?
The, the, there's a shared wall on that one?
It's a larger piece of property because it has two twenty-five foot setbacks. So, that's a corner.
That's a great point.
Anthony, what happens if we don't let her change her, if we don't let her keep her commercial?
Well, she'll, I mean, the city council can proceed with an administrative rezoning over an objection of a property owner. Um, that can be done, you know, whether the property owner then wants to contest the action, that would be up to the property owner. But the law, law allows the city to proceed administratively.
I just, you know, because the short-term rentals, you know, the neighbors are not gonna, if she goes to a daily rate, they're not gonna...
Well, I, I, I will share this with the councils, um, that she indicated that her, her property taxes have gone up recently, and because of that, they're obviously owning and operating this rental unit, her costs have gone up, she's looking to pass those costs on and increasing revenue, which means she said, once this tenant is, the lease is up, she will be strongly considering going to a vacation rental.
I don't know why I thought that was seen, the city manager and I were, I knew two years ago, the owner, but it's sold twice since then. I think the pre, the, the existing owner purchased it from someone who, I don't know, probably, they didn't have it long, if, if my memory is, maybe a year or two, and the prime, they were long-term residents. But yeah, with the shared wall, after seeing Councilmember Willis's map, I, that's how I live today, I share a wall, and it's different. I mean, there's, we're, we're thankful that our neighbors are long-term, but it brings an interesting perspective to, you know, who's making this decision. Having those property owners, have, have we spoke to them?
The adjacent property owner?
This shared wall in the, in the next lot, I guess it would be one oh nine Adams, I would assume.
Um, we've, we've not been contacted by, um, by them. The only communication we've had is, is just the, the various mailers and notices that we've, that we've sent out.
The other neighbors know that she wants to keep her commercial?
I, I don't know what communication she's had with the, but I, I, I don't, I don't know. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, because they see the advertisement, they're, they're seated, C one today, it's going to change to R two. If, like, the existing use today, that's all residential. Um, and then even read the agenda, because they, you know, they wrote it as, as they should, as advertised and passed. If they didn't follow what happened tonight, right, they wouldn't know that they retain their C one, and it, it creates a, a bit of a, a wave in it, you know, that it's all okay, but it, it makes it, I understand what Mayor Pro Tim's saying, is they see it heading in a way, and I guess theoretically, this could happen, but it'd be really interesting to, to get their input. Um, I, I think we have time to do that between now and then. I'd be fine approving it as written with, as the city attorney said, if that's okay, because then that'll give us time to talk to them if we choose and/or if they come forward, and maybe, Kyle, you have some more information, and in the event it passes and we leave them out and they retain, and it turns into this nightmare, right? Or they just choose to go back, uh, they would have to get like a spot zone or like a individual zoning change. They would basically do this for one parcel.
That's right. There, there would, there would be, they would be responsible for the cost, and then they would, there would be obviously at least a, a, a three-month process to get that done. Because there would be a, you'd have to go through the, the comp plan amendment, so it would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board and then two readings here, so.
And that's a negative, like you're asking, what is, that if you ever choose to go back, it's on your dollar and time, and, okay.
I have, I have another question. Given the fact that if one oh seven was approved as C one, and one oh nine is R two, and the place burns down, does one oh nine not get to rebuild?
There, there is a property line underneath that party wall, because these are townhouses...
There, there is a property line underneath that party wall, because these are townhouse units, so they're fee simple property-owned. They, they would each have their own respective right to rebuild.
One oh nine would be zoned to R two, conforming, they could rebuild. One oh seven?
Well, I think that's.
Different story.
So one oh seven, they, could they build that same structure? Is that your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not, not, not zoned, as, as Anthony was discussing earlier. I mean, it's, it's, uh, there's some non-conforming limitations in the code about having to rebuild to the current code, which our current commercial, C one, doesn't allow residential development.
Which means if that, if, if this one oh seven was destroyed, she would then come back and ask for her residential rezoning to build a house back on it. She'd have to.
I just wonder if there would be insurance difficulties with that.
I mean, yeah, if you dig into it, it's really interesting. Could you attach a rebuild, I, I, yeah, it's, 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 it's interesting, yeah.
Some of the insurance companies looking at conform, you know, whether a property is conforming or not as to whether they're paying out. I mean, we've seen that down with Hurricane Ian and different places from our storms. So she's definitely taking a risk that she wouldn't be rebuilt. Am I correct?
Yeah. And I, I don't even want to imagine the building code ramifications of attaching a commercial structure to a residential structure.
That's, that's where I was going.
Two-hour firewall separation.
It's, that's a deep hole you have to think your way through.
Could the prop, could one oh nine, piggybacking off Councilmember Willis's in the discussion here, do they, when you apply the setbacks, and they wanted to build a standalone, build not go shared wall, could they, do they have enough room to?
The, this is a townhome, so it was replat as a townhome, but a townhome dimensions, lot dimensions.
Mm-hmm. Is it a, yeah.
Yeah, and if you, if you, I don't know what the building code says, you probably can't attach a commercial structure to a residential structure, but I don't know that for fact.
Yeah, that, that may be a, a bridge too far down the sea.
Yeah, that's a deep, that's a deep dive there.
Well, I think we should make a motion to, um, S Ordinance Number ten twenty-four as written on the first reading, and then that gives her time maybe to talk to us or whatever. I'll second.
You already do oh nine?
No, we haven't done any.
No, I haven't done anything on oh nine and ten.
No, well, I mean, it, it sounds like we, the question was, do we adopt this with the exception of one oh seven? I think we've said, no, we're going to adopt it as written.
Right.
And so.
Zero nine two twenty twenty-four.
And I can, I haven't went to the public with this one yet. Have I?
I don't think so.
So we'll go to public and then come back, and, okay, so this is a public hearing item for Ordinance Number oh nine twenty twenty-four and Ordinance Number ten twenty twenty-four on those streets of, uh, yeah, Adams and Jefferson. Anyone like to speak? Please come forward and online, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Seeing none, public comment closed, back here, now we can do it.
Make a motion, we adopt Ordinance Number oh nine twenty twenty-four as is.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Jackson to adopt Ordinance Number oh nine twenty twenty-four as is.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Okay, then roll right into the next one. Looking for a motion for the next.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number ten twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, and a second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Both Ordinance Numbers oh nine twenty twenty-four and ten twenty twenty-four passed five oh, first reading, moving on to item number ten.
Okay, Ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of property legally described as the Canaveral Breakers Annex Apartments, a condominium inclusive of all units in common area as described in and according to the Declaration of Condominium, recorded in official records book eleven twenty-eight, page one eighty-one to two oh two, inclusive, as amended, all of the public records of Brevard County, in which is located at eighty-five twenty-two North Atlantic Avenue from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability incorporation into the comprehensive plan in an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is Ordinance Number twelve dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as the Canaveral Breakers Annex Apartments, a condominium inclusive of all units in common area as described in and according to the Declaration of Condominium, recorded in official record books eleven twenty-eight, page one eighty-one to two oh two, inclusive, as amended, all of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and which is located at eighty-five twenty-two North Atlantic Avenue from the current C one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the C, uh, to the city R two medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and an effective date. This is first reading, and also a public hearing items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Any questions or comments from city staff on this?
Yes, sir.
Nice. Seeing none, it's public comment, or public hearing item, go to public comment. Anyone like to speak for, on Ordinance Number eleven twenty twenty-four and Ordinance Number twelve twenty twenty-four? The address is listed by our city attorney. Seeing none online, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or come forward. Go ahead and close public comment, back to this council.
I'll make it. Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number eleven dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Jack, Jackson to adopt Ordinance Number eleven twenty twenty-four. Further discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
No. Ordinance eleven twenty twenty-four passes five oh. The next one.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number twelve dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to adopt Ordinance of twelve twenty twenty-four. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Ordinance twelve twenty twenty-four passes five oh. Moving on to item number eleven, city attorney.
Okay, Ordinance Number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation for a portion of Lot Three, Block Nine, Cape Canaveral Beach Gardens, Unit Number Two, as recorded in Plat Book seventeen, pages eighty-one and eighty-two, of which, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, which is located at one oh two East Central Boulevard from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is Ordinance Number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for a portion of Lot Three, Block Nine, Cape Canaveral Beach Gardens, Unit Number Two, as recorded in Plat Book seventeen, pages eighty-one and eighty-two, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, which is located at one oh two East Central Boulevard, and from the current ci, city C one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the C, cities R two medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for appeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and an effective date. First reading and public hearing items, Mr. Mayor.
You, city staff, any comments on this one?
Yes, sir.
City council, any questions for staff? Seeing none, public hearing item, Ordinance Number thirteen and Ordinance Number fourteen. If anyone like to speak on any of the addresses, uh, read by our city attorney, please come forward, and those online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, public comments closed, back to the council.
To, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number thirteen twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, second by Mayor Protim Kellum to adopt Ordinance Number thirteen twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Ordinance thirteen twenty twenty-four passes five oh. And the next one?
We'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number fourteen twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt Ordinance Number fourteen twenty twenty-four. And no further discussion, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Ordinance fourteen twenty twenty-four passes five oh, and the one we've been waiting for. You've made it this far, city attorney, we're rooting you on.
Ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation for lots eleven, twelve, and thirteen, Block Thirteen, Avon by the Sea, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Three, page seven, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at one oh eight, one twelve, one fourteen, and one sixteen, Madison Avenue, from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, incorporation, and comprehensive plan, and an effective date, and companion rezoning ordinance is Ordinance Number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, Block Thirteen, Avon by the Sea, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded, Plat Book Three, page seven, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at one oh eight, one twelve, one fourteen, and one sixteen, Madison Avenue, from the current city C one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the subject property to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, separability, and an effective date. First reading and public hearing items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. Any comments on this one, city staff? City manager? Council, any questions? Public hearing item, if anyone like to speak, please come forward. Please raise your hand if you're, uh, live streaming, participating online. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the council.
Make a motion, we adopt Ordinance Number fifteen twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Jackson to adopt Ordinance fifteen twenty twenty-four.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
The, uh, the property that recently burned, is anyone in that? It's totally vacant now, isn't it?
That's correct. Both the commercial structure as well as the residential structures to the east.
Okay.
This is a perfect example of why we're doing this.
Yeah.
The residential structure is zone commercial, and they couldn't rebuild unless we were doing it.
Well, I think they could, they'd have to come back to the council and, and, right, and we'd have to vote a non-conforming use in, assuming you could do that. Basically rebuild, if you're non-conforming and it burns down, and ignoring all the other issues, we'd have to allow them, because the special exception's not there anymore.
Right, right. So, I mean, yeah, his, his option is to do what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm.
Comp plan it and rezone it to residential, so it becomes a conforming use.
Um. And otherwise, the city, city code would apply, there's a section about nonconformities, which says that when a use is discontinued or destroyed, it cannot be rebuilt except in conformity with codes.
Okay. So what I said, we, we couldn't follow, we'd be in conflict with that.
As Dave said, this is a perfect example of why we want to rezone this to residential, so they can rebuild.
Yeah. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Willis?
Yeah.
Any other questions? So this is, yep, Madison Avenue. But that's not the unit that caught on fire, right? It's right, I thought it was the one that started the, it's the two.
It's the, it's the one to the west of the first property.
Yeah, it started in the residential structure.
And there, the, the multi-units that were, I guess, victims of the, where the fire started.
That's, the, the residential structure that really took the brunt of it, it was a duplex.
Okay, wow. Anything else on this one? Uh, if not, we can, we've got the motion and, and second. City clerk? Or, did you need to clarify that? Are you good?
Good.
Seeing none. Please call her up.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Ordinance fifteen twenty twenty-four passes five oh. One more to go.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt Ordinance Number sixteen twenty twenty-four. The same que, no, it's the same question you had, it doesn't really change this, so it still applies. Um, okay, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Jackson?
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Ordinance Number sixteen twenty twenty-four passes five oh. And when I said the one we've been waiting for, I didn't have any significance to the property, it was just the last one, is all I meant, I hope you got that. Um, wow, so we just passed sixteen, first reading, well, yeah, the ordinance is to kick off twenty twenty-four, this is forward-looking, and a really nice job working through this. Um, we are at the report section of the meeting, it's nine ten PM, and this is our, our final, uh, meeting of twenty twenty-three, and, um, if anyone like to provide a report, please, we can go down the line. Mayor Protim?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, my granddaughters and I represented the city in the Cocoa Beach Parade, which was awesome. We were on a golf cart, and it was fun, we had a good time, and, uh, we represented the city, so, and I just want to wish staff and everybody a ha, a happy new year and a hap, merry Christmas, and thank you for all you've done, and thank you for being patient with me. Um, I'm back and I'm better, and I'm look forward to the new year. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Jackson, any reports? Anything you want to share?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone. Everyone's worked really hard getting me up to speed. Uh, the staff has been great, and the different departmental directors. I'm just very happy that I get to work with everyone. Um, I feel great to be here, I feel humble, and I'm happy that I get to serve the city and here on the council, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that's my report for that much.
Councilmember Willis?
Had a, uh, very well-attended coffee with the cop a couple weeks ago. Had a very well-attended coffee with the cop a couple of weeks ago, and then the following Thursday, we had a very well-attended fraud scams presentation by the Sheriff's Department, raised a, a lot of food for the food pantry. And I wanted to thank the city for helping advertise it. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate all the hard work, the staff. I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. I want to wish all of council a Merry Christmas, and I'm turning my phone off for a couple of days.
Understood. Councilmember Davis, last but certainly not least.
Pretty much ditto everybody. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I look forward to 2024. And staff has worked so hard and just know that it is appreciated, um, by me and I'm sure the rest of the council, so we appreciate you, just so you know that.
And I echo the council Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We got through another year and we have done so much in the month of December. It's so intense and, uh, sort of a blur, but when you go back and you read the weekly updates and the things that are happening throughout the city, the reindeer run once again was a great experience. Holiday in the city, the Cocoa Beach Orchestra performed in our, I think it was the first music performance we've had really in the C5 Community Center. Such a talented group, and those are Cape Canaveral kids going on, and the Cape View was, was awesome, and so that was an honor to be a, a part of that. And then, uh, the Giving Tree, once again, Lisa, you do such an awesome job and all the support around you.
Yes.
Really impressive. Everyone's pitched in some way or the other, just spreading the word, being a part of it, but that is the most heartwarming thing that, that we do, and it's done so right, and it's not about us and just, it's, those kids, Cape Canaveral kids are going to have a very nice Christmas, and that's awesome. So thank you and thank everyone, this whole community, for making that happen. That's all I have. I, I can't, like I said, I echo everything, um, but city staff, thank you all. We got through another year. I'm looking forward to 2024 and, uh, seeing some of these things come to fruition, so thank you all. Councilmember Davis?
Violence, everything.
Yes.
And I would like to suggest that maybe when host, the Canaveral host, that we could have them perform.
Mm-hmm. They were so good. I, I don't go abroad with the big shows, but I didn't need to. It was just really well done. I think that's a great idea. They had their, um, Christmas party, I think, tonight at Cape View. It's in the city calendar, but whatever we need to do.
Yeah, to have the various cities who does.
Um, Mia works with leading cities.
City Clerk's office works with, um, Sheila, who's the executive secretary, so we can.
City Manager?
Yes, a couple of quick things. Um, I also want to echo what you said about Lisa and her excellent work with the Giving Tree, also the, the volunteers who helped wrap this record number of, of presents, and I understand that, um, Mayor Morris and, and Christina and Parker actually took it over the finish line by working through very late last night. Thank you for your help with that.
Lisa, she's, thank you, welcome, thank you.
Uh, there is no coffee with the city manager this Friday due to the holidays, and, uh, lastly, Mayor, there's two things you asked me to remind you of to bring up here if you want to discuss them. One is the, um, the mayor and council office moves, and the other one is the, um, possible 60th anniversary banner raffle. Happy to describe either one of those a little further if you like.
The first one, I think, can wait.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Uh, we, we had some pressure on that, but the, because we had a person accept the offer for the IT position, I mean, we were, we made an offer to the person, but she declined. She got a better offer elsewhere, so the pressure's off. But we will have to proceed with that at some point.
Thank you. Um, the second one?
The, the, so the 60th anniversary banners, um, we, we took them down and we will not be putting them back up because it was just meant for the 60th anniversary, and um, staff received a call from somebody said, hey, I'm, I'm currently 60 years old. I would love to have one of those, and that gave staff the idea that, wait a minute, people really like these things. Maybe we should talk about a banner raffle. So, um, Melinda actually brought it up and she said, uh, it was, this was her idea, a great idea. So I brought it to the mayor and said, what do you think about raffling off those banners? And the first thing he says, well, how many do we have? There's, there's 22 of them, um, of various different sizes. We'd want to keep two of them, so there's really 20 of them to give away. Um, and it could just be a random raffle, people who are interested, but Mayor suggested maybe we offer them to past mayors and other dignitaries first and then raffle off the rest. And I don't know how you want to go with that, but we're happy to help with whatever you'd like to do there, Mayor.
They, I was just, you, former council members, or just people who served in some capacity that, that would, you know, that was a part of the 60 years opposed to more of like, you know, luck of the draw. I think that, you know, the Rocky, the Mayor Ho, it just, Lamar Russell, these folks have, Rocky served 50% of the 60 years on council, so half of it, and so it's like, maybe the idea was, we have 20. One in the mayor, the council's office, i- it chose, maybe that's part of the two, but, um, at least giving those folks a few that the council thinks the first right of refusal and to say, hey, offer it or simply give it to them. I think if the council has some names and we can slowly get, get them over to you or whoever, uh, and maybe nominate, we can.
Okay, so if it's okay with council, what we can do is, um, I'll have, I'll task Melinda to develop a program to do the first priority for those dignitaries, identify them and then offer them to them, and then the rest, um, um, we would do a, a raffle at a, at a community event with the mayor, just and, and she'll put the program details together for you and I can present it to you sometime during the month of January. It doesn't have to come back to council.
Okay, that's great. Yes, if we give a few out and then the raffle idea, or if there's any other ideas here, there's one in the mayor's office, uh, right now, so I know that I can I can think of five people that I, I think would be really appreciative, but
Okay.
Sounds like a good plan.
I'll have Melinda work with you unless there's any objection from the council.
Exactly, there's. Could they submit names?
Yes, please. Um, I'll have Melinda reach out to each of you for names. How's that?
Great.
Okay, thank you. And Merry Christmas, council, Merry Christmas, staff, Merry Christmas, City Attorney, Merry Christmas to everyone. Wish you the healthiest and happiest of New Years as well.
Thank you. City Attorney, any?
No report, but Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all. Uh, fun-packed year, that's, that's to say the least. I wish you all the best and, uh, have a great Christmas and New Year. All your family.
City Clerk's office?
We echo the same. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Can't wait to see you in January.
Community development? Yes.
You still look young, Dave.
That's true. That's true. It does speed up. Our county sheriffs? Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you. We can say it's 9:21 and meeting's adjourned.